Welcome to the July 17, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Menuchaian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you. As we say the pledge of allegiance tonight, I would ask you to think about our troops who are risking their lives overseas for our safety. Ready to begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a law.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which this evening will be delivered by chaplain Alan Garcilazzo from Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here this evening at the city council meeting and are grateful for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. Sometimes we take these liberties for granted and forget that it took many lives and sacrifices to achieve them. May we do our part to protect and preserve them. Now, I pray that you will bless this meeting, guide our mayor and city council members and city staff. May the discussion and decisions that are made tonight reflect your love and your goodness. In your name we pray. Amen.
And we have your report.
Certainly. The agenda for the July 17, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 12, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Your presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. as the agenda preview for the meetings of July 24, 2012.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for July 24th, for the Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Successor Agency, we have no business agenda items. We do have a meeting at 3:00 p.m. This is the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, a joint meeting. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding the 2011-12 Homeless Solutions Project, year-end report and direction to support Asensio's application to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority for the 2012-13 Winter Shelter Program. That evening for the city council meeting, we have a number of consent items. Interim General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is funding for the Chromium-6 research studies. Interim General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the billing design, printing and mailing services for Glendale Water and Power bills. Interim General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, annual purchase order for MultiChem Group, supply of landfill gas scrubber chemicals. Director of Community Services and Parks, elderly nutritional meals program, and this will go from 2012 through 2016. Director of Public Works, this is the 2012 congestion management program. Under adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance amending the downtown specific plan map. Under action items, we have two items. Director of Human Resources, adoption of classification and compensation resolutions for employees of the city of Glendale. And lastly, Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding Glendale's float entry for the 2013 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you will let me hijack this portion of the meeting and call, re-call to order the Glendale Housing Authority, which has previously been in closed session. There's nothing to report out, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The Housing Authority is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you. Mr. Kasaki, next.
Next item on the agenda is council and staff comments.
Any council or staff comments? Ms. Friedman.
Sure. Thank you. Two things. First, I wanted to let the public know that this last weekend, four of us up here attended the Independent Cities Association's conference that they have. They have two conferences a year. At this conference, the focus was on emergency preparedness for public safety and city council members. We learned about the big one, which we've all heard about, but watching the presentation made me really think that maybe we're just doomed. But I was able to hear about all of the action plans that the county and the cities have put forward to deal with a disaster in the case of an earthquake. We learned about how the communication works between the various cities in times of emergencies. We also talked about other topics such as redevelopment. I was able to do a forum on bicycle infrastructure in cities, and I was really happy to be able to bring that to the independent cities and heard a lot of great feedback from cities that are looking to doing things with pedestrian and bike infrastructure in their cities. There were really a lot of great seminars, a lot of great topics throughout the day, and very glad to have been able to do that. And on another note, I would like to ask my colleagues to support us asking for staff to move towards completion of the city's share-o program. I've spoken to the city engineers, and they have the funding to complete that program. It's something that is, should not be controversial with the public, is it does not change any of the rules of the road. For those who don't know, share-os are shared lane markings. That do a few things. One thing is that they indicate for cyclists what direction they should be biking in so that they're less inclined to bike in the wrong direction, which is very dangerous. It also tells them the safest place on each particular road to position their bicycles. And also, by having share-os on certain streets, we're hoping to divert bicycle traffic from streets where it may be less safe for them to ride to streets that are more safe and better designed for bicycle traffic and better equipped to handle bicycle traffic. So I would ask my colleagues if they would support us moving towards completing that program.
I will support it and ask that we put it on the agenda as soon as feasible. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm sorry, one last thing.
Keep going.
Last night, several of us also attended the annual gala for the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry. I was very happy to attend. It was a very well-attended event. It was sold out. The registry recruits people into the bone marrow registry and into sort of a sub-registry for those of Armenian descent, because the closer a person can get to drawing from a pool of their own ethnic background, the better chance there is for them to have a match for their DNA. So it really helps people find matches. And this is something that's very near and dear to my heart. I had a friend about four years ago, a young woman named Danica, who was diagnosed with breast cancer in her 30s. She was successfully treated, but after her treatment for breast cancer, she got secondary leukemia as a result of the chemotherapy that she had from breast cancer, which is a very rare side effect, but it does happen. And she was Hispanic, and because she, if you're an ethnic minority, you have a much smaller pool of DNA to draw on and a much smaller pool of donors. They weren't able to find her a match, and because of that, they weren't able to do the chemotherapy that would have saved her life, and she died, leaving two small children behind. So I very much support the work of the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry, and they have saved many, many lives and other similar bone marrow registries. And I want to commend them for the hard work that they do. And just to remind everyone out there that being a bone marrow donor is painless, it's just a very small blood test to get into the bone marrow registry. And if you're lucky enough to be a match, it's a very, very safe and painless procedure. So I would urge everyone to look into that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a comment, just to go off the discussion of our meeting on emergency preparedness at the ICA conference. The coordinating agency is generally the county of Los Angeles. And I couldn't help but snicker when the issue of communications came up. And the question was, well, how will you communicate with all these different agencies? And they said, oh, we've got this truck, and we pull the truck up, and we connect, we throw this switch and throw that switch, and all the communications happen. That's, that's in absence of any sort of county-wide system. We have the ISIS system that we have teamed up with many different municipalities across the L.A. basin. It is a instantaneous, seamless communication system. Unfortunately, L.A. County and other agencies want to develop their own agency, which is their own system, which is called L.A. RIX, and they admitted that it is far from being completed. They haven't even started on the infrastructure. So as I said, I couldn't help but snicker as to how ahead Glendale is with some of our neighboring cities in developing inter-agency communication systems. Mr. Mayor, I want to report on my week, last week, and it was a, an up and down week, to say the least, for me. Let's start with the ups. The up was that despite not seeking the office, I was unanimously voted in to be the, continuing to be the chair of the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments. This is a multi-agency council of governments involving the cities of Burbank, Santa Clarita, San Fernando, the city of Los Angeles, and their four or five districts in the valley, as well as the two supervisory districts. That's how my Thursday morning started out. I was very happy about that. Then Thursday afternoon rolled around, and I got a shocking phone call, a very disturbing phone call. The phone call was from the transportation deputy to Supervisor Antonovich. In that phone call, the transportation deputy indicated to me that I would no longer be serving on the MetroLink Board of Directors. That decision was made by Supervisor Antonovich in his role as the incoming chair of the MTA. The MTA chair gets to pick who goes on the MetroLink Board. I had served under, initially appointed by Supervisor Molina, served under Pam O'Connor, Mayor Villarogosa, Supervisor Don Kenaby. Supervisor Antonovich's turn rolled around, and I was summarily removed. I worked hard on the MetroLink Board of Directors. MetroLink, not to be confused with Metro. MetroLink is the five-county commuter train agency that operates trains essentially in and out of Union Station and to the five different counties. I was one of only two attorneys on the board. I felt that I brought keen insight to issues involving litigation. I served on the litigation subcommittee that was able to obtain and pool a $200 million settlement fund for the victims of the Chatsworth collision. I worked in selecting the general counsel and attended almost every meeting. I really thought I was representing both the MTA, Metropolitan Transportation Agency, as well as the county of Los Angeles in a very dignified and responsible way. What does this mean for Glendale? This is troubling news for Glendale, folks, because we don't have someone on the board. Where I used to sit and be keenly aware of what was going on and funding opportunities and direct funding towards the city of Glendale for very important issues such as the crossings, which we're going to discuss a little bit later, the Doran Crossing, Grandview, Sonora, as well as the creation of a quiet zone. I had committed to the folks in the Pelencone Estates Neighborhood Association that I was going to do everything I could to make the sealed corridor a reality so the trains, two MetroLink lines, Union Pacific and Amtrak, did not have to blare their horns every time they came down that stretch. And we've all heard those horns. This was, this was work that I was doing. I was almost nearing completion on that. But now we don't have representation. We have, it was the supervisor's intent to bring someone from the city of Palmdale in there. He felt the city of Palmdale needed representation. Unfortunately, it was discovered that he couldn't just pick someone from the city of Palmdale. The member on the MetroLink Board had to be an MTA member. He later withdrew that name of an individual from the city of Palmdale and named Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas. Supervisor Ridley Thomas is a great person, very skilled, represents his constituency in a fine manner. However, if anyone wants to know how many miles of MetroLink track are in Supervisor Ridley Thomas's district, the answer is zero. Supervisor Ridley Thomas has no MetroLink tracks in his district. I'm not sure why the supervisor and chair of MTA, Mr. Antonovich, made that decision. Obviously, he's not happy with me. Some say it could have been my vote on the measure R to bring before the residents of L.A. County to vote on. Some speculate it was my position against the 710 tunnel, which I'm very vocal against. But whatever it is, they, they won't have R. Najarian to kick around anymore on the MetroLink Board, as far as we can see now. So it was, it was good while it lasted. There's always a chance that a new chair coming into the Metro, to the MTA Board next year may see fit to appoint me. But I'm truly sorry that I'm not representing all of L.A. County with a keen eye on our issues here in Glendale. I think it's a, it's a loss for the city. And I'd better just leave it at that and not, not get anymore into it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from the city council? Any comments from the staff?
Do we have a cruise night this weekend?
Yes, we do, Mr. Weaver.
Everybody ought to announce.
Very good point. It starts at what time?
It's been very quiet this year.
About 5:00?
5:30 p.m.
Well, show up earlier. Let's.
Mr. Mayor, it's from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. It's on the screen right now for.
Show up at 4:00 and get a bite to eat before you, it's a wonderful, wonderful event, and I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, but it brings tens of thousands of people to the city of Glendale. And you, the rolling art that you see that afternoon and evening is unbelievable, from 1920's cars into the 50's, 60's, hot rods, roadsters, touring sedans, you name it. It's just a wonderful affair. The, the restaurants are generally quite full all afternoon and evening, and it's put on by our parking recreation department with lots of help from the city staff, Mr. Lansafane's staff, and of course, the PD and the fire department. So this Saturday, Brand Boulevard.
About 40,000 people, right?
Forty thousand, yep.
Come early, if you're local.
There's plenty of parking in the parking structures usually.
Food and the restaurants are all open, and bars and the pool halls and everything.
Stay out of the bars. So let me announce that we are going to pull item 8B, which is the initiation of a zoning code amendment for view protection related to new construction on hillside zones. We got a number of emails from homeowner associations, and so we'll pull that off the agenda for a few, for a few weeks till we have an opportunity to, to fill them in on, on the issue. With that, we are done with council, staff, and comments.
Mr. Mayor and council, next item was consent items. The following is routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Like 5D, as in data?
Okay. We're going to pull.
5C, please.
5, and I have two cards for 5E.
I want to pull that anyhow.
Okay. All right.
There are motion for the remainder of the council.
I'll move the remainder.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchaian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Okay, next.
The 5C is interim general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding funding for Chromium-6 research studies. We had actually asked that this be pulled because the key staff involved could not be here tonight in case there were questions from council. That said, however, I know Mr. Najarian has some information he'd like to present.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very exciting. And those of you who think I'm a one-trick pony and all I do is transportation, I'm happy to have worked on, on this Chromium-6 issue. As you know, we have a problem with Chromium-6 in our basin. It's a byproduct of industrial and manufacturing uses. It's seeped into our water table, and we have been working with the federal government on ways to remove Chromium-6 from our drinking water to a safe level. What the safe level is, it has not yet been determined yet. We're waiting for a report. But about three years ago, I started my interest on this when we were just beginning some of our Chromium-6 research and removal methods. I was able to team up with a noted professor and physicist, previously a professor at Yerovan State University and head of the physics department, Dr. Gogic Vartanya. After some meetings with the water department staff and some research and discussion on the issue, we have come up with, mainly he, but I helped him a little bit. We came up with a method, this is a new theoretical process by which Chromium-6 can be removed from our water supply. This is a system that is not used in any other location. It is separate from the system that we are currently using, that the funding is currently dedicated to. Now, the good news is that this treatment plan can be used as a supplement to the system that we're already doing. We treat it, we get it down to about six parts per billion. This process can be added on without, at very low cost, with very little infrastructure, and hopefully to get our Chromium-6 levels down to zero parts per billion. This may be a revolution in the way Chromium-6 is treated. I have a short PowerPoint, and I'd like to invite Dr. Vartanya to come up and tell us a little bit about what, what research has shown with the removal of Chromium-6. And it is called the magnetic shield for Chromium-6. Dr. Vartanya, and I promised everyone that we wouldn't go too long, just a few minutes. This is a lengthy subject, but if you can just encapsulize it for the folks at home and folks, the engineers in the audience and on the dais, I think they would appreciate it.
And we need your, your name for the record. You need your name.
Gogic Vartanya. Mr. Mayor, as an engineer on the dais, has the Water and Power Department been informed on all this? I'm hearing it for the first time, so I just wondered, staff has already.
There's been a shakeup in the staff at Water and Power, and I don't think those principals that we spoke to are still here.
Well, somebody's got to be over there running the department. I'd like to make sure they review all this.
Certainly, sir.
Okay. Well, they will in time. Go ahead.
We're not installing it yet.
Honorable Mr. Mayor, city of Glendale, honorable council members, city of Glendale, dear friends, ladies and gentlemen. As well-known, exvalent chromium is most toxic form of chromium, a primary drinking water contaminant in U.S. California Department of Health recently issued the public health goal of 0.02 milligram per liter of chromium, exvalent chromium, chromium-6. The treatment, studies of treatment of Chromium-6 in the city of Glendale involve four phases. First phase, this is treatment screening, treatment in the laboratory. Second is developing technologies, treatment technologies. Then weak-based ion exchange method and reduction or coagulation filtration treatment. And next step is full-scale implementation. After these all steps, we thinking that there may be added one more treatment, enhancement of this treatment, when water flow in the pipes. That after all this treatment, when water flow in the pipes, maybe added other treatment, enhance which was done. This flow of water may be shielded, maybe create shield for Chromium-6, for exvalent chromium atoms. In here, this V is velocity of water in the pipe, and this B is magnetic field, external magnetic field on the pipe. That means inside the pipe acting different forces, external magnetic field, intermolecular forces, and other forces. And based on all these forces, we can create magnet, the shield, that's some kind of shield for Chromium-6 atoms. No any atoms of Chromium-6 can go with the direction V. They will be trapped and will be removed from this motion. For calculation of optimal parameters of this method, we can use a magnetohydrodynamic theory. We can find optimal all parameters and find exactly what parameters we need for Chromium-6. And we can build real shield for Chromium-6 in the pipe during the flow of water in the pipe. All possibilities in this model will be discussed, and after some experimental works and engineering trials, this method may be used. Application of external magnetic field will allow, also have one more benefit, that this field may increase alkalinity of water, which is very important for human body. That magnetic fields will have two benefits, that will allow to construct shield and will enhance to increase, increase alkalinity of water. This is that model, method, which we thinking it will be used after some experimental works and will be, give us possibility in the pipe makeshift for all exvalent chromium ions. Thank you very much for attention.
Thank you, Dr. Vartanya.
And in response to Councilman Weaver's concern, as soon as we can get a handle on our water expert, who our water expert is, we'll be happy to discuss this with them as well as representatives of the, the federal government. We've researched it. This method has never been used before, to our knowledge, and we think it ultimately will, will serve to remove the Chromium-6 from, from the water system. So we'll keep you all posted.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Do I have a motion?
There is no motion necessary. This was pulled.
Oh, okay.
This goes to 5D. Mr. Mayor and council, as director of public works regarding maintenance of city-owned Elgin Street sweepers and vector catch basin cleaners. D1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a five-year contract with Hacker Equipment Company.
Yes. I don't need, I don't necessarily have any questions regarding this issue. However, with the Independent Cities Association seminar that we went through last week, there were a number of vendors who provide these specific services. Have we looked at contracting out some of these services? I would also like to know what are our costs, annual costs of the street sweeping, if we can get that number.
We can bring that back to you and, and give you the assurance that the, the maintenance contract doesn't exceed the length of time of the life of the trucks that we use. So at some point, we would go out to rebid for everything.
No, I, I understand. It's just an overall, in my mind, and it's an overall policy decision whether, and dealing with our budget shortfalls currently, it's whether can we contract out services, not just necessarily this one, but other services. On this one, I would like to have a financial of, of the expenses that we're dealing with, with the sweepers at this time, including capital expenditures and maintenance costs for the sweeping for our streets. With that, I'll move the item. With that, I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Njorian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, Ivy.
He is Director of Public Works regarding safety enhancements at the Grandview Avenue and Sonora Avenue at Grade Railroad crossings. E1 is motion awarding a construction contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $4,458,000 for the safety enhancements at the Grandview Avenue and Sonora Avenue at Grade Railroad crossings project, authorizing contingency in amount of $445,800 and rejecting all other bids. Two is a resolution appropriating $4,550,000 of Measure R subregional funds for the safety enhancements project. Three is resolution appropriating $2,107,000 of Proposition C 25% grant funds for the Grandview Avenue Crossing Safety Enhancements Project. And four is a resolution appropriating $307,160 for the installation of utility ducts under the Grandview and Sonora Railroad crossings.
Further questions or comments from the council?
No, I just want the public to know, because Pelicanee will be wondering what's going on, so getting word out will help.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is perhaps some construction noise that Pelicanee will be happy to hear, because this is part of the improvements, the multi-agency work that was done between the City of L.A., partially MetroLink, MTA, our own staff. Jono, if you, I know you're, you have a little bit of info on this, if you can just let the folks know how we, how this was all done, where the funds came from, and what the ultimate cost to the city was.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the, this upgrade that we're doing at Grandview and Sonora is part of the settlement agreement we reached with California Public Utilities Commission when we constructed the Flower Street Crossing. And we were required to upgrade the existing crossing, which is Grandview and Sonora. And then also worked with City of Los Angeles, we shared crossings at Doran, Broadway, Brazil, and Chevy Chase to upgrade those crossings, which by doing so, bringing all those crossings to state-of-the-art equipment installation, we will be able to qualify for a quiet zone in the future. So as part of this Grandview-Sonora project, we applied for Prop C grants through the Metro Call for Projects, where we got $2.1 million. And in addition, we received, we allocated, as part of the regional measure R we applied, and we allocated those funds for the total of about $5.2 million total that we are allocating from the measure R to fund this project. So the total project at Grandview-Sonora with the railroad crossing improvements is about $9 million total, from which about 75 percent, 73 percent of that is from grant funds. The rest of the funding came from our free development agency fund at the time where those funds were allocated. Project is moving forward, we also are working with MetroLink, SCRA. They're out to bid on the Broadway and Brazil at grade crossing. We are in the process of also mediation with California Public Utilities Commission for the Doran Crossing Upgrade or Closure. And the Chevy Chase Crossing is also is out to bid. And hopefully, within a year, we'll have all of these crossings completed in terms of all the safety enhancement, so that we can meet our California Public Utilities Commission settlement agreement and make it a safer and qualified for the future quiet zone process that I know the homeowners in that area are very anxious to, to have. So I can answer any further questions you may have.
Good job by the transportation chief and by the former member of the MetroLink board. Okay, I have two speaker cards, Shanook Ramirez, followed by John Kossimba.
Hello, thank you very much. To the Director of the Public Works regarding safety enhancements in the Grandview, at the Grandview Avenue and Sonora Avenue at Grade Railroad crossings. As you already know, I am adamant for public safety, health, welfare, and, and safety, primarily for all Americans. I hope that the construction contract that has been awarded to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $4,458,000 has been done in good faith and fair dealings, which would mean, in plain, simple English, no shortcuts and no bait and switch. That means, ladies and gentlemen, hiring no cheap labor, no criminal illegal aliens, no gang bangers, and no anchor babies. Thank you, Governor Jan Brewer of Arizona. For we all know too well that they take shortcuts and perform in a substandard and shoddy manner, and the dreadful consequences, oh my God, God help us, for their, if their poor performance, you will be embroiled in legal muck for the rest of your lives. And that would make the city politicos and Sully Miller Contracting Company a laughing stock and a blemished and eternal tarnished reputations. Therefore, I admonish you all to take responsibility, first and foremost, hire military veterans, whether uniformed or ununiformed, active or inactive, along with all pilots and those who are on furlough. And lastly, hire only legal law-abiding citizens, no cheap labor, okay? And that means, again, as you already know, and about the noise pollution, the railroad crossing improvements, hell, the noise, they are noisier than our beloved pilots who fly over, as Gillespie's flying over now. So I hope that you people learn to decipher from toxic noise pollution versus normal aircraft pollution. God, I say literally, man, that, they, they're just a joy. Thank you so much, thank you.
Hi, my name's John Kossimba, 905 Alma Street. I represent the Pelicanee Estates HOA. I first got involved in this quiet zone project back in 2006, when, as a private citizen or resident of Glendale, when the meetings for the Pelicanee Flower Crossing were going in, and I said, hey, what about the train horn noise? Nobody had ever heard of it back then. So I've been looking, looking down at this all, since this time, since this time I found out that, you know, if you have safe crossings, and the Pelicanee Flower Crossing was put in as a safe crossing, you don't have to blow the train horns. But it has to be a zone, we eventually found out. So you've got to get all your crossings safe. So we are looking forward to approval of the crossing upgrades and the contracts at Grandview and Sonora to, to further enhance getting our quiet zone in. At the end of this month, I guess we're going to, I'm going to be meeting with the ALJ Rochester, Honorable Rochester, to see how the mediation agreement, if everybody's meeting their quotas on that mediation agreement, to see if we're proceeding on the Doran Crossing and the Brazil Broadway crossings, see how that's going. So as soon as we get all these crossings upgraded and safe, we're looking forward to getting the quiet zone implemented. And I guess that also includes the Chevy Chase Crossing. Well, I guess, oh, by the way, just that one crossing that was put in at Pelicanee Flower that added 400 additional train horn noises right in the center of our neighborhood, so that really set us off right there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So move five E, one, two, three, and four.
Second. Okay, yeah, let me add that this is a great step forward, and it's going to make a big difference for noise, and also make a big difference in terms of safety. There's an awful lot of trucks crossing these intersections, so it's, it's positive all the way around. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Njorian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, I would like to move one of the action items ahead of oral communications, that would be eight B, I'm sorry, eight A, the MOU with the GFFA. I know the chief has a appointment he has to keep, and there were a number of firefighters in the audience a little earlier, so let's go to eight A. Would you read that?
Certainly, eight A is Director of Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City and Glendale Firefighters Association, GFFA. Eight A1 is a resolution amending the MOU Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Chorchowa.
We are glad to bring you, sir, one of the final MOUs for the, the coming fiscal year, although this one is a multi-year, it again reflects the positive and collaborative work between the city and its employees. Mr. Doyle will give you the, the details.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the last several weeks have come before you with several MOU agreements with our respective employee bargaining units, GCA, GMA, GPOA. These have been for one-year contracts of MOUs that were set to expire June 30th of this year. Our Glendale Firefighters Association currently have an MOU that is not set to expire until June 30th of 2014. As you know, the GFFA has been extremely cooperative in working with the city on budgetary issues over the past five years. They have agreed to reopen their contracts so far, a total of three times, to assist the city in resolving some of these budgetary issues. The first time was in 2009, when they agreed to waive and forego a scheduled cost of living increase that was set to take effect July 1st of 2009, and they moved that, that back two years to July 1st of 2011. The very next year, we had equally challenging budgetary problems, and once again, the Firefighters Association did come back and offer to again reopen their contract, this time extending the contract an additional two years, taking that, that 4.5% COLA that they had previously negotiated, and moving that back an additional two years from July of 2011, now to July of 2013. Additionally, with that, with that amendment, they also agreed to increase the employee cost sharing provision from 1.5% to 2%. The last amendment that came before you was in November of 2011, and that was to effectuate the changes involved with the paramedic engine restructure, which essentially permanently reduced staffing levels on all of our fire companies, all of our shifts, for some long-term savings. Those savings would ultimately look to save us in the neighborhood of $2 to $2.5 million per year. Tonight, the item before you is yet another amendment to this MOU, and it's another effort, again, on behalf of the city and firefighters' union to save money. This fourth amendment to the MOU further extends this contract out two more years to June 30th of 2016. The main feature of it is an agreement to reduce the scheduled 4.5% cost of living increase that's set to take effect in, in July of 2013. It's reducing that to 2.5%, so it's taking 2% off of the previously agreed to COLA. Additionally, the firefighters have agreed to gradually increase their employee portion of the PERS cost sharing, which is currently at 2%, by an additional 1.5%, all the way up to 3.5%. And this puts them on par with the Glendale Police Officers Association, who are also paying 3.5% of the employer's share. The remainder of the COLA, again, the original COLA that had been deferred several years, would then take effect in 2015, July 1st, 2015, which would then be the final year of that contract. Additional elements of this, of this MOU amendment are a retirement incentive that, that would take the form of a payment of $43,000 into the employee's retirement health savings plan on the condition that affected employees retire by December 30th of this year. This is an effort to achieve the full savings of the restructured, restructured paramedic engine program, in which we need a total of 12 firefighters to retire through attrition. We anticipate this retirement incentive to speed that process up, as many of these firefighters would probably not leave for another two to three years. But that, that element of the, of the proposed MOU is, is likely to save significant amounts of money, because we are not going to be filling those positions once they become vacated. So that's a permanent saving throughout the, the course of, of this, this contract. Again, we anticipate anywhere from eight to 12 firefighters actually taking, taking us up on that offer. This proposal was put forth before the membership of the Firefighters Association, and it was passed or ratified by approximately 94% of the vote. With that, we do encourage the, the city council to consider adopting this resolution, this amendment, and here to answer any questions, Chief Scoggins is here as well.
Mr. Mayor, I would only add just one thing onto that, that with all of our other associations, specifically GCA, GMA, and GPOA, they have participated with the city and partnered with the city throughout. However, all of those agreements were extensions of one-year agreements. GFFA is unique in that they had a multi-year agreement that was negotiated in good faith that featured this increase. And what you are seeing here is a willingness to not only come into alignment with respect to the cost sharing on the hot-button issue in terms of, of pension cost, but also this revolutionary development and innovation in the way that ALS and BLS services are delivered, that, that actually results in fewer full-time union members, paramedics that are providing the service. Or the, the, the common theme that you see in, reported night after night after night, this is, is antithetical to that commentary, that you actually have a, an association that is working diligently to find the best solution with management in terms of delivering the highest level of service regardless of, to a large degree, regardless of what it means ultimately to the, the numbers of the association. The idea is that this just makes sense, it's an innovation, it results in better service, and if the city can save money along the way, so much the better. The GFFA has, has definitely demonstrated that they are a partner with the city.
Any other comments or questions? I have two speaker cards, anyone else want to speak on this item? I'll close the, Shanook Ramirez, followed by Mike Mohill.
Again, thank you very much. As we approach the new environmental and ecological weather uncertainties, it behooves us to be fully prepared to receive the onslaught of heavy terrain wildfires, primarily in the San Gabriel Valleys, and not limited to Pasadena, Glendale, and Burbank, and all other unincorporated surrounding areas. Hence, we need more American pilots and American firemen, not illegals, not Latino gang bangers and/or anchor babies. And I demand that we hire, first and foremost, military veterans and military pilots, and those who are on furlough, and also military supersonic aviators, to fill in those positions now, and are open new positions to fill them as well, so we could avoid a catastrophic financial housing disaster and/or more chronic homelessness as a result of a glut of home insurance claims, because they either not disburse the monies quickly and are some bogus technicality, and you get zero from the home insurance companies, and you will end up in a horrid shelter and/or homeless on the streets. And I don't wish that on any legal law-abiding citizens, nor in the military or pilots. Thus, use preventative measures to avoid an all-out wildfires and plumes of black ash smoke that affect our wildlife and our aircrafts that are flying by up in the air, and affect our high-demand and brilliant pilots. And again, we need pilot safety, that's a priority. God bless our dynamic fire department pilots and all public safety law enforcement chopper pilots. But there are only a handful, and if we had an all-out wildfires or riot breakouts, you couldn't deter nor quell the situation to a minimum level of security or habitability. And with the limited pilots now and the emergency crew that we have now, it would just be unfair. And again, they would not be able to sustain all that just with a handful that you have now. Not only that, but you would be endangering their lives and with fatigue and/or poor to no visibility. Thank you very much.
Time's up.
Mike, you have two minutes. Mayor's discretion.
Option of the mayor.
There's no set time limit for items, it's up to the mayor.
Pretty nice. Okay, I'll do my best under two minutes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for controlling the situation.
Did you prepare?
I prepared a three-minute speech, I prepared a three-minute speech, sir.
All right, well, and you, you taking the time to, did you prepare it, or someone prepared it for you?
I prepare my own speeches, sir. I don't, I don't need, I don't need a speechwriter.
I'll give you your full three minutes, Mr. Mohill.
Thank you. I mean, there's so many people who want to speak on the subject matter.
Actually, you and Ms. Ramirez were the only two.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill. My name is Mike Mohill. Glendale Firefighters Association is a great organization with many fine men and women willing to serve our community. They often put their lives at risk, but unlike policemen and women, their jobs are not classified as one of the top 15 most dangerous jobs, according to the Department of Labor Statistics. I do believe they should be justly compensated for their performance, but I do not believe they should retire as millionaires, as Councilwoman Freeman would make us believe. Councilwoman Freeman has stated city pensions should not be compared to a Social Security check, and that Social Security was meant to keep one from abject poverty. But I guess having firefighters work 30 years entitles them to have lifetime annual pensions of over $100,000 at retirement ages 50 or 55. Like police officers, they too can retire at age 50 or 55 years of age and receive 90% of their last year of spiked income. Let me remind Mrs. Freeman that the average Social Security check for a single person is about $14,745 a year, and that the maximum Social Security check is about $30,000 a year, even if your name was Bill Gates or Steve Jobs. Furthermore, the median income for the city of Glendale is about $55,000 annually. San Jose and San Diego have already filed for bankruptcy. San Bernardino is also limping towards bankruptcy. Under the radar is in Orange County, the little city of Stanton is just $8 million away from financial catastrophe. Unsustainable salaries, pensions, and medical benefits are one of the underlying causes for bankruptcy in these cities. The public employees of the city of Glendale should be compensated just like in the private sector, with Social Security, medical and dental group insurance, and a 401K plan. By having Social Security as the pension for all, there would be no longer a need for the voters of Glendale to guarantee 7.5% return on their investment with CalPERS, a guarantee that does not exist in the private sector. Also, the elimination of collective bargaining in the seniority system and hiring at-will, or one day Glendale will also be facing bankruptcy. Mayor Quintero and councilmembers, the agreed-upon compensation plan with the Glendale Firefighters Association, which you have approved, is not in the best interest of the people who voted you into office. And here is the report from the Department of Labor Statistics. Firefighters do not fit... They're not top 15, they're not top 1, 2, 3, they're after that. But our policemen who risk their lives are. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Any comments? Ms. Weaver.
Well, besides making the motion, I would sincerely, I think on behalf of all my colleagues, like to thank the Firefighters Association, some of whom are in the back, for everything they've done, the understanding that they've had for what this city has gone through and is still going through financially, and always leading the pack in terms of negotiating, working with us. It's never been so easy, as it has been with the firefighters, negotiating any contract. They understand what we're going through. They're getting just compensation, they're delaying a raise that they had coming for the last three, four years, and it's still in the out-years for them to get that contract that we all entered into with them, and they're volunteering delaying. So I can't thank them enough for what they have done to keep our hills from burning this year, if that's at all possible. I know most of you are on fire alert, dry brush out there, clear your hillsides, whatever. These guys are going to be out there saving our homes. So, Chris, thank you, and the team for what you've done. It's greatly appreciated. I'll move 8A1.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to make some comments. Boy, that takes a cake. I've heard a lot of things in my years here in the council. Being a firefighter isn't a dangerous occupation. Tell that to the families from the New York Fire Department, by the way, that that was a one-time event. On the other hand, on a regular basis, whether it are forest fires in California, they happened right here, not far from us, where firefighters lost their lives in one of those blazes, and all over the West. That really gets it. So I don't know anything about this report, but I think it's a very dangerous occupation. In addition to the physical danger, then you have the physical requirements that it takes to continue to be a firefighter. One thing is to come in as a young man or woman in your twenties, but when you're in your forties and fifties, and you're having to keep up with those 20-year-olds, physically keep up with them, with the ladders and ropes and hoses and all the rest of it. And Glendale particularly, to me, is something to consider. When you look at this city and you look at the towers on Brand Boulevard and on Central, in the event of an earthquake, in the event of a catastrophic fire, our firefighters are going to have to climb those towers in order to put them out, just like they did in 9/11. So while the rest of the workers are going downstairs, they're heading upstairs. That's one issue. The next issue are hillsides, everything surrounding, putting fires out there. Then we have the San Fernando Road Corridor with multiple industrial manufacturing. We have the trains. We know what took place a few years ago when that train derailed. We have the freeways and multiple freeway fires. Multifamily neighborhoods here with some of the highest, densest, some of the densest census tracts in all of California. But I guess outside of that, they really don't do that much. They really don't have to train for that much. Then, of course, we have fire inspectors and the people on the engines themselves that are continually going out to look, to make sure that everything is in place, fire sprinklers, et cetera, et cetera. But anyway, that doesn't seem to be enough for some of the... Not some, for one or two of the residents of Glendale, because basically, I never hear any complaints except from one or two residents. Any other comments?
Well, I just wanted to point out to the public, in case they didn't know, that I think it was two years ago, the department instituted their, is it BLM? BLS. I'm not great with the acronyms. Program, which basically meant that the Glendale Firefighters Association agreed to reduce their own membership and to allow firefighters, to sort of push firefighters to retire, so that the city could use basic life support instead of paramedics for the runs to the basic life-saving, non-critical calls, going from people's homes to hospitals. That's going to save the city at least $2 million a year. And we've already been saving, I think last year it was $1 million, because the program hasn't been fully instituted. We couldn't have done that without the cooperation of the GFFA. And they said, yes, this will save the city's money, and we are willing to do that and reduce our own membership in order to make that happen. So they have been true partners with the city. They have... Talk about being at the ICA conference and being with other cities. I had officials from other cities come up and say, "Did your fire department really voluntarily open up their contract when they didn't have to and put aside their raises for a number of years?" And I said, "Yeah." And they said, "Well, what did you do? Did you have to force them into doing it?" No, they just volunteered to do it because they knew that we, you know, had a revenue problem in the city, as all the cities do, and we have our issues with pension and with salaries, and they came forward to help out. So they have been a great partner, and they're great at what they do with fighting fires, and just nothing but good things to say about them. So thank you, guys.
And it should be added on. Our department came to us with the eye of the BLS. It wasn't our idea. Fire came to us as a way of reducing personnel and saving the city millions of dollars. Anybody ever forget that?
Mr. Jarien.
And I don't apologize for being a fan of the fire department. I support them whenever I can. Not to be left out of the equation is Chief Scoggins, who leads from the top down through his command structure, down to the very greenest recruit that you have out there washing the rigs after he's done the dishes for the midnight meal. But I think it's great. We're very lucky to have a department like that serving us in Glendale.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. And just to be clear, this is the Firefighters Association, I would term the rank-and-file of the fire department, so it's not the managers. They have also given up salary and benefits, but this particular motion has to do with the actual firefighters. Okay, we'll move to oral communications.
This is a... You wish otherwise, this is the three-minute event announcement portion. We will have the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Okay, I have one speaker, Mary Lou Coghlan from Wellness Works.
I'm going to introduce another one. Good evening, members of the city council. And Scott, thank you for visiting Wellness Works last week and learning about our Welcome Home Veterans Service program. And it was Scott who asked and advised and suggested that we come this evening so that we can let you all know of the services that we're providing to the city and to the veterans. My name is Mary Lou Coghlan. I am a Wellness Works board member and have been associated with this 501(c)(3) organization throughout its 26-year history. This evening, I am honored to introduce Wes Kloyes, a Vietnam veteran and much appreciated friend of the center. He will tell you more about one of our favorite events, the monthly third Saturday Welcome Home Veterans BBQ and mini clinic. Wes?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that after returning to the Glendale area from being away for quite a few years, the past eight years, I have attended the Brand Boulevard Car Show. I've really enjoyed it. I've got to see some old high school friends and neighbor friends each year. Two years ago, when my son returned home from Iraq, he introduced me to the Welcome Home Veterans Program at the Wellness Works here in Glendale, and through the monthly third Saturday barbecue and free clinic. It was shortly after that first visit that I realized, as a veteran and a member of the community, how much the returning veterans need our support. I've been volunteering at the Wellness Works for a year and a half. Also, I saw Chaplain Al here today. I volunteer for the past four years through the Chaplains Department in the grief support facilitating a group at Glendale Adventist Hospital. This evening, I'd like to invite the veterans and the families, this is men and women, and not just our current returning veterans. We also have World War II, Korean, Vietnam, and peacetime veterans who attend the Saturday's barbecue. And along with the barbecue, their Saturday program includes a mini clinic where professional practitioners volunteer their service to provide reflexology, acupuncture, and other healing therapies. The barbecue represents a thank you from the community to our veterans. This and so this Saturday, July 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Wellness Works at 540 West Broadway, that's right here in Glendale, that's 540 West Broadway. It'll be free, no cost to veterans and their family. And if you have any questions, you can call the Wellness Works at 818-247-2062. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come back again.
Mayor Quintero, if I can just really quickly make an announcement as well that I forgot to do during staff comments, and I'll be very brief. This is just a quick reminder to anyone viewing at home and hearing in the audience that on July 25th, there will be an event at the library. That will be a book release, Towards Golgotha, The Memoirs of Survival by Hago Parsanian. This is a lecture and book signing by Dr. Arda Arseneen Akhmedyakshi, who is the Dean of Humanities and Sciences at Haigazian University in Lebanon, as well as a member of the President's Commission on Election Reform in Lebanon. And she'll be doing a U.S. tour to speak at the Aspen Institute in Washington, D.C., and will be coming through Los Angeles to speak about this book. As I've mentioned before, what's significant about this is that Hago Parsanian happens to be my great-grandfather, so I'll be introducing my aunt at this event.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kasakian. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda, under the Item 7, Adoption of Ordinances, is ordinance establishing the Rossmoyn Historic District Overlay Zone. This was offered on July 10th, 2012 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Weaver.
Move 7A.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next.
Item 9, under hearings. 9A is director of Public Works regarding conditional vacation of the first public alley east of Glendale Avenue and south of Mission Road. Vacation case number 150V. 9A1 is resolution ordering the vacation. 2 is a resolution adopting Plan Number 12-213. And this is a public hearing.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We have the first public alley east of Glendale at Mission Road. This features a utility easement pole or utility pole that sits on an easement, and we are looking to make some adjustments there. Mr. Galanian will give you the details of it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, this was already previously introduced. This is a conditional vacation of the first public alley east of Glendale Avenue and south of Mission Road. The only condition that is attached to the easement is an existing GWP utility pole, and the property owners have entered into an agreement with GWP to enter onto the property to access the utility pole for repairs or adjustments if necessary. Other than that, everything is in order. Planning Commission has already approved the request for vacation.
Open the hearing. Any comments?
Open the hearing.
I'll open the public hearing, and I don't see anyone coming forward. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move 9A, 1 and 2.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next.
Next is a return to the full five-minute portion of oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Alik Berberian, followed by Givore Turzayyan.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, community members. My name is Alik Berberian, and I'm a lifelong Glendale resident. I've enjoyed the safety and comfort my community has offered me, as I've been a supporter of spending time outdoors, whether it be hiking at Brand Park, walking on the streets of Glendale, or even riding my bike around town. Furthermore, I appreciate the effort that the city of Glendale has made to promote the safety of cyclists sharing the road with automobiles with the proposal of the road diet experiment. On the other hand, although I am a supporter of the idea, I do not believe it is the most practical approach for our city, considering its geography and demographics. With that said, I do not support the Honolulu Avenue Road Diet Experiment, and I don't feel the need to implement traffic safety for cyclists through this project's specific approaches. On that note, I'd like to thank the city council for putting the Honolulu Avenue Road Diet Experiment on hold, after it faced both heavy opposition and some support from community members. With the project's initial objectives being to promote traffic safety for cyclists and to encourage a reliable alternative form of transportation, the road diet appeared to me as a practical and effective use of public funds, as well as an encouraging incentive for leisure cycling or commuting by bike, which would in turn reduce traffic in downtown L.A. because of the reduced numbers of commuters, and it would also get more people outdoors. My impression was quickly changed after realizing a number of outlying factors. First off, this experiment is not in the best interest of cyclists, but instead would be an attempt to slow down automobile traffic by constricting the road down to one lane and further causing people to drive slower because of overcrowding on the road. The road diet seems to be a means to the wrong end, aiming at correcting the city's problems of speeding and reckless driving, instead of solely ensuring safety for cyclists. Moreover, considering Glendale's poor track record in driving skills, the city that was the highest-ranked in the nation in 2010 with some of the worst driving skills, needs different traffic enforcement than the addition of a bike lane in place of a lane for cars. Reckless driving, speeding, and tra- Reckless driving, speeding, and traffic accidents can easily be reduced with the decrease of traffic congestion, a solution that will not be met through the implementation of the Road Diet Experiment. Glendale cannot afford to have any more aggravating factors adding to our traffic issue, and the Road Diet holds many potential risks adding to this existing problem. Next off, this increase in traffic congestion resulting from the experimental bike diet poses a questionable use of public funds. Although I understand that the Road Diet Experiment would be funded by the Transportation and Development Act, funding that may only be used for purposes similar to this program, the allocation of this money is a huge risk, considering this project is namely an experiment and has no guarantee of success. More importantly, the city would not have enough funding to reverse the project in the case that it failed. These conflicts reassert the risks in implementing the Road Diet and further reassure the right decision the City Council made in placing a hold on its establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Givory Terzayan, followed by Mike Mohill.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, council members, and fellow community members. My name is Givory Terzian, and as a resident of Glendale, I have concerns about the city of Glendale's parking situation. The city seems to be overcrowded, and due to that, there is minimal parking for residents and guests. Though there are parking meters available, it is a nuisance to constantly think about when the last quarters were inserted and how much time is left until the meter has run out of time. In addition, I believe the cost of metered parking is unfair. Aside from it being a burden on residents, it also plays into effect for downtown businesses and how long customers or residents can stay. I'm requesting that as my representatives, you consider perhaps implementing a price adjustment or removing the fees from the parking meters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
I'm sorry, I thought I was...
While Mr. Mohill's getting ready, are you ready, Ms. Ramirez? Mr. Zavos, why don't you come to the microphone? So the Harry Zavos, followed by Mike Mohill.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale. Last week, reading from the Constitution, the state constitution, I showed that the prospective increase in the charge for electricity must be put to a vote of the people because it cannot meet two of the state constitution's Article 13(c), Section 1e2's requirements to be exempt from such a vote. One of those two requirements is that the charge must be for a service or product that is not provided to those who are not charged for the service or product. I pointed out that the increased electrical charge cannot meet this requirement because GWP provides electricity free of charge without general fund reimbursement to illuminate streets and traffic lights that serve the general public. The argument was made from the dais that this does not mean electricity is provided to those who do not pay for it because the public cannot plug into a street light pole to get electricity. That's true. On the one hand, the public can't plug into a street light pole to toast its bread or run its electric shavers. But on the other hand, a light bulb is screwed into a socket to illuminate for the public the city's streets, street and traffic lights. If there is a difference between those two situations, it's so subtle, it eludes me. It reminds me of the meaty evil argument over how many angels could dance on the head of a pin. Tonight, I am content to leave that particular argument and let the public and everybody else here decide for themselves whether there is a difference and to decide for themselves if the city's practice violates that second requirement. And I would ask them to do so with this language of Article 13(c) of the Constitution in mind, and I quote, "The local government bears the burden of proving by a preponderance of the evidence that any levy, charge, or other extraction is not a tax, that the amount is no more than is necessary to cover the reasonable costs of the governmental activity, and that the manner in which those costs are allocated to payor bear a fair and reasonable relationship to the payor's burdens on or benefits received from their governmental activity." Now, with the few minutes that I have left, it was, I think, over two months ago that I first raised the Proposition 26 or Article 13(c) issue as to whether a vote is necessary for the prospective electric rate increase. And around that same time, I raised the issue as to whether or not the transfers from GWP to the general fund were legal. And the impression was given that a legal opinion would be prepared by the city attorney's office. And I believe it was either two weeks ago or last week that the city attorney indicated that he had prepared such an opinion on Proposition 26 or the Article 13(c) issue with regard to the need for a vote, but he hadn't completed the legal memorandum with regard to the transfer of GWP funds to the general fund. And I am just puzzled as to why that legal memorandum, that legal opinion, already completed on the Article 13(c) issue has not been released to the public. Now, I've been told it's going to be released eventually, but why not sooner than later? The more time the public has that report in their possession, the longer they can study it, the longer they can digest it, and the more they will be in a position to intelligently respond to it. Is there any reason why it can't be released immediately?
Harry, I'm sorry, Mike Mohill, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. City activists from the beginning felt the smart meter technology was misrepresented by the GWP manager Glenn Steiger, but approved by city council members Draymond, Freeman, Njerian, Quintero, and Weaver. The existing meters were never broken. The new meters were sold as the best thing since sliced bread. Steiger told the public the cost was going to be $28 million, then $50 million at a GWP meeting, then $70 million, and now the city officials still do not know the final cost. So who will take responsibility for this fiasco? Glenn Steiger already left town under a cloud of wrongdoing. City Manager Jim Starbord destroyed all his emails before leaving town. Council members will blame Steiger, and the anti-smart meter group will say, "I told you so." The ratepayers, who just had their water rates increased again, will have to shoulder the burden for the city, and another water bond is in the making as we speak. Headline news, Councilman Njerian. A few days ago, you said that the Fitch Bond Rating Company had said the Water Department of the GWP was just doing fine. Well, sir, the other day, the company downgraded our $50 million Water Revenue Bond, Series 2008, to A from AA. The rating outlook remains negative. Downgrading the water bond by Fitch Bond Rating Company shows that the GWP is on shaky financial grounds, and we should no longer be transferring millions of dollars from the GWP to the general fund to pay for unsustainable salaries, pensions, and medical benefits. Just a couple of years ago, council raised our water rates 3.8% because of a Fitch Bond Rating. On another matter, our new city manager and city attorney, both being appointed by at least three council members, are listening to their bosses when they defend the money transferred from the GWP to the general fund to pay for city services, salaries, pensions, and medical benefits. Furthermore, they can also justify rate increases for both water and electrical as long as their bosses tell them to. To go against the council would place their jobs in jeopardy and give up a possible million-dollar lifetime pension. Our city manager once said, "City manager generally lasts about two, three years in a position." Now the public can understand why our city manager defends his bosses rather than agreeing with the angry voices of council critics. Electric rate increases and bonds will continue to increase as long as the majority of our elected officials, city council members, are beholden to the city unions and their unsustainable salaries and pensions. The dog and pony show currently being performed by the GWP management for utility rate increases and unnecessary bonds will continue till the voters decide enough is enough and vote out the current incumbent council members in April 2013. Our city council is driving our city towards bankruptcy by taking orders from the city unions. The recent 15% increase in water rates and a proposed 14.7% or 17.4% electric rate increase is nothing more than a backdoor tax, excuse me, to support the salaries and the pensions of union employees. Council, we need to stand up to the unions and bring them into the real world. The average social security check for an individual is about $14,745 a year. People who are on fixed incomes and struggling families trying to make ends meet should not have to contribute to a million-dollar pensions. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Chinook Ramirez, followed by Charles Hooker.
This is a matter of principle. I would like to say first of all to the council, under the Glendale News Press, it said, and I quote, "It's a great day for Glendale," said Mayor Frank Quintero, a Vietnam War vet. And though I did not know that, I want to thank you, sir, for serving in the United States military. Nothing gets past me, by the way. Having said that, I am disappointed in both President Barack and Michelle Obama in administration, Department of Justice and Eric Holder, Republican incumbent Mitt Romney, U.S. Supreme Court Justice, with the exception of Senior Justice Antonin Scalia, who's feisty and aggressive and full of anger, and rightfully so against this gang-banging world in America, the FBI, the Homeland Security, ICE, law enforcement, and DMV, who are all pandering to the criminal illegal aliens and Latino gang-bangers. Further, they have failed to deport, deport, deport with no amnesty and no asylum. Why? Because they are butt kissers. What we need is the Honorable Governor Jan Brewer of Arizona and the Honorable Governor Pete Wilson, ex-governor, to run for president. Therefore, I take great pride in doing your jobs against these Latino gang-bangers and criminal illegal aliens, for we have a gang-banging plight. Let's begin by exposing some of these racketeering Latino gang-bangers and illegals under the federal statutes racketeering and RICO for driving illegally and committing crimes with their vehicles. And they are 5, M as in Mary, N as in Nancy, R as in Robert, 884. Next, 5, H as in Harry, T as in Tom, V as in Victory, 780. Next, 4, Y as in Yellow, K as in King, J as in Japan, 909. Next, 6, N as in Nancy, Z as in Zebra, M as in Mary, 653. Next, 6, C as in Charlie, R as in Robert, V as in Victory, 766. 6. Next, 6, H as in Harry, A as in Apple, N as in Nancy, 311. Next, 5, V as in Victory, W as in World, C as in Charlie, 516. Next, 8, Z as in Zebra, 61054. Next, D as in David, F as in Frank, A as in Apple, V as in Victory, E as in Elegant, L as in Love, A as in Apple. Next, 5, H as in Harry, G as in Go, J as in Japan, 086. Next, 6, K as in King, Q as in Quintero, T as in Tom, 397. Next, 6, T as in Tom, H as in Harry, S as in Shopping, 230. Next, 4, B as in Boy, H as in Harry, R as in Robert, 357. Next, 2, V as in Victory, E as in Egg, N as in Nancy, 186. Next, 4, U as in Up, O as in Open, T as in Tom, 496. Next, 2, R as in Robert, L as in Love, C as in Charlie, 871. Next, 6, S as in Susan, S as in Susan, E as in Egg, 378. Next, 6, W as in World, 99131. Next, 4, K as in King, E as in Egg, K as in King, 948. Next, 5, H as in Harry, B as in Boy, P as in Papa, 610. Next, 6, H as in Harry, 04453. Next, 6, T as in Tom, F as in Frank, B as in Boy, 966. Next, 5, P as in Papa, F as in Frank, P as in Papa, 557. Next, 6, D as in David, L as in Love, M as in Mary, 200. Next, 6, H as in Harry, 6017. Next, 3, P as in Papa, P as in Papa, E as in Egg, 471. Next, 6, P as in Papa, E as in Egg, Z as in Zebra, 131. Next, 1322U. Next, 4, Z as in Zebra, O as in Open, L as in Love, 555. Caveat, ladies and gentlemen, I have taken on... I got ADT. It sucks. It doesn't work. I was a victim of ADT. These gang-bangers came in from under the ground or through other gang-bangers who are employed for ADT. They managed to get into my home. No matter how much money I've spent in locks, locks, thousands of dollars in locks and combination locks, they managed to get in. Why? Because they have keys. They have keys, or they are employed by ADT and other legal systems where they can actually get into your house with bypassing the alarm systems. And I am not alone. This is a problem. It's chronic epidemic. Thank you very much.
Charles Hooker.
I'm sorry. So much messier.
And Mr. Mayor, all those... Mr. Ramirez doesn't need to read those license plates off. She can submit them in writing to the clerk or to our police sergeant, Tom Lorenz, because you're saying it really fast. I tried to write a few, and you lost me. So if you give them to Sergeant Lorenz or to our clerk, Artis Justice Kasakian, well, I'm sure they'll be happy to discuss any help you might need. Thank you.
Mr. Hooker.
I don't think I can quite beat that last speaker, so... But anyway, here goes. Councilman Laura Friedman, your name is in practically daily in all of the papers. You are a proactive bicyclist. I congratulate you on that, but why are you throwing... You can say that you're not throwing the issue of bicycles down everybody's throat. You know, you're going to go from one area to another area. And bicycles, you know, great, I ride one every once in a while, but I started out in 1984, right after the Olympic Games, when Rebecca Toig and everybody else was riding. And it's great, but right now, in the city of Glendale, you'll get killed riding a bicycle. And there is no room in a one-horse town like Glendale, when it was built, to have these lanes. And it's going to be too costly. Property owners can't afford it. Anybody, that's money coming in to the state, that's coming from somewhere. That's coming out of your wallet, my wallet, somebody's wallet, projects that can go to schools, something worthwhile. I don't get why you are pushing, except maybe to be re-elected to your position. And maybe there's enough bicycle riders that'll put you back in office. Let's see, what else did I want to say? Oh, Section 8... Oh, Section 8. We sure need a Section 8 in the Rossmoyn area because we don't have any, you know, Section 8 development, as we do in the downtown area and other parts of Glendale. And that would fit in perfectly right where Nibley Park is. And another thing is, why was Item 6 always put, it says on the brochure that we get, it's supposed to be in a certain order, but it was moved one time by one of the councilmen, and it's never been, gone back to its normal position. I'm curious why that is. And I guess the only thing I can think of on that, moving it around like it was done, was they were afraid that everybody would get up after item, the agenda for the public to speak. They wouldn't have anybody there. So I'm, I'm hoping that this is going to be a dead issue on the bicycling, but I, like I said, I used to love to ride around in Montrose and all over because I was raised in that area. But right now, it is dangerous, and it's not, not a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, that's the final speaker. Comments?
Sure. Oh, did you want to?
Well, just maybe between the city attorney and myself, we could address a couple of the issues that were raised, yeah?
Sure.
Okay. To the extent that there are a handful of angry voices, I don't know necessarily that angry voices make for accurate voices. When I hear Mr. Mohill's comments, it reminds me of the notion that for every complex multifaceted problem, there's a very simple, a very straightforward, and very wrong answer. And that's not any personal disrespect to him, it's just that the arguments that he raises don't really match what the reality is here within this organization, within this community, and certainly within the jurisdiction of the city of Glendale. The notion that the city is somehow, has anything in common with the city of San Bernardino, or the city of Vallejo, or the city of Stockton, or even San Diego or San Jose, beyond the fact that they are merely municipalities, is specious, to say the least. The city of Glendale is solid due to the fiscal discipline of this organization going back many years. We have a very solid tax base. We have a vibrant economy here relative to the rest of the region. And as you just saw with the GFFA MOU, the council is not beholden to associations. Quite the contrary, the associations are equilateral partners with the city in making sure that we function properly. It seems almost poetic that what you see before you in this particular agenda is the antithesis of that which is wrong in the state of California in a number of different jurisdictions. That just does not match reality. Now, he did mention that Fitch did downgrade our water utility to a single A+ with a negative outlook. However, I think there was a little bit of confusion on this part with respect to a comment that Mr. Najarian made previously, in which Fitch had upheld an A+ rating for the electric utility a few weeks back. We have ratings for both electric and water, and this was the second piece of that rating exercise. Why did they rate GWP water down? Because we have accumulated a deficit in GWP water, as we discussed quite considerably during the budget process. Why do we have that deficit? Because we continued to build out infrastructure using cash savings and drew down the cash that was in GWP, as opposed to financing that with bonds in a more conventional way. At the end of the day, that's what the issue is. That is precisely the case. We have taken cash and capitalized, converted it into infrastructure. The Diedrich Reservoir, the Chevy Chase Reservoir, many of the other pieces of infrastructure that you see. The smart meters are not an issue any more than any other piece of infrastructure is because, at least the smart meters were not only budgeted, but they were offset by a grant from the federal government. Just because older meters weren't out of date is like saying we shouldn't innovate motor vehicles because they run just fine. And you could make an argument that Detroit, many of the problems they had in 1970s, 1980s in particular, was because they wouldn't accept innovation because what they had was good enough. We've entered a digital age, there's no going back, as several of you have commented previously. And smart meters are an effective part of the future of GWP. With respect to the transfer, we don't defend the transfer because, I'm speaking, and if you'll forgive me, the city attorney and myself, don't defend the transfer because it's what the council wants. We defend the transfer because it's lawful. We can indeed make that transfer. You've heard one of the speakers recite to you repeatedly the California Constitution. I have no disagreement about what the California Constitution says. It just doesn't apply as prescribed in this particular case. The transfer, the rates that have been, proposed rates that have been put forth are not somehow inconsistent with that. It's a lawful transfer, it's an expense of the utility, and by the way, it goes to fund very important services through the city's General Fund. Now, keep in mind, through this process, through the budget process for this current year, we were facing $15.4 million structural deficit. Through working with our employee associations and through cuts, retirements, and layoffs, you took the hard steps as a council to rectify, and we're actively rectifying that situation for the future on a going-forward basis. This recession is worse than anything anybody has seen in their adult lifetimes, certainly since the Great Depression. So what does that mean? That means that at this point, what we are working to do is preserve public safety, which, as you know, we really did not negatively impact police and fire budgets in this current fiscal year, and instead took the majority of those cuts from quality-of-life services and from general government services, from libraries, parks, and all the functions that occur here in City Hall. That is akin to trying to resolve the federal budget deficit without addressing the defense budget, or social security, or Medicare. Yet you still did it. Yet we still found a way to make that happen in a strategic and intelligent way. We're actively engaged in that now. The idea that we would just lop off another $20 million and expect that it wouldn't result in closing libraries, that it wouldn't result in not having any kind of maintenance of our parks, any kind of regularity, or that we finally wouldn't have to impact police or fire, is just, it's a false argument. It has no basis in reality. You wouldn't do that. No reasonable elected official would do that if their interest is focused on the best interests of all Glendaleans. With respect to this issue of the city attorney opinion, and certainly I would defer to the city attorney, but I would close by saying that we will provide, as Mr. Zavos knows, because I stated this quite clearly at the Maple Park meeting last week, that we would be providing that opinion well in advance of the scheduled rate hearing in front of GWP Commission. The idea for us, and really, I think, the limiting factor for us as staff, certainly for the city attorney's office, is that we continue to hear evolving arguments about what is or what is not legal, what the challenge is or may or may not be. You heard last week that there was a challenge based on some other government code section as it pertained to school districts. We want to make sure that we're putting good, comprehensive, correct information out in front of the public. And to the extent that we have, I think, at this point, gathered all of what the universe of objections might be on this particular matter, city attorney has called that altogether. We do, again, believe, and feel we have confirmed, that the transfer is lawful, that there is no problem with respect to school district fees, and that we are operating under the intent of what the charter allows for the transfer of funds from GWP to the General Fund for the benefit of all of our residents and businesses, that we have placed ourselves in a position as the organization to address those issues come what may at the end of this month and heading into August. That may not be convenient for folks who want to, you know, sit in the cheap seats and take potshots at what the best interests of the community truly may be, as determined by the five of you based on input from all of our stakeholders. But at the end of the day, we have an obligation to listen to as many people as possible, not just those louder, angrier voices, but to do what's best for everybody that holds a stake in Glendale.
If I may, just briefly, as we encountered somewhat last year with the issue of the water transfer, a legal opinion that our office writes doesn't exist solely in a vacuum. And so I have a client, the city, that wants to consider, in this case, an electric rate increase. I don't know if it's going to happen, we'll find out at the end of the summer, but I need to be able to provide all the options to the city. And I've done that, and I will continue to do that, as we go through the process of studying an electric rate increase, and we have studies prepared to justify whether electric rate increase is permissible, and to what extent, we need to make sure that we're also on the legal track, making sure that that study complies with what we've written and how we've analyzed these particular issues. As Mr. Ochoa said, we feel that the transfer is lawful, and that the way we undertake the transfer complies with the charter, and, you know, I've been hidden that we believe that the city can proceed with a rate increase if it chooses, while complying with Prop.26 without requiring a vote of the people. And as we get, as Mr. Ochoa said, as we get closer to that time before the public hearing process, before the commission and the council, our thoughts on those issues will be made plainly evident. So.
I was just going to respond to Mr. Hooker. I apologize if you're mystified as to why I've been pursuing this bicycle, the street safety program. I probably have not done a good enough job at communicating that, so I apologize for that. But it was interesting to me because, on the one hand, he wants to know why I'm interested in this, but then also goes on to say that the streets are not safe for bicycles. And I think that within that, those two statements, there's the answer. I'm interested in doing this and pushing for increased safety for cyclists and pedestrians precisely for that reason, because the streets are not safe enough for them. And I would like to see a Glendale where the children of Glendale can ride their bikes in the street. I think we owe that to them. I think we owe it to our citizens to have a city where you can walk through a crosswalk in our downtown or anywhere in the city and not get mowed down. And it's about pedestrian safety, and it's about bicycle safety. It's basically about safety for everybody who uses our streets. The streets are not just for cars, they're for all of the users. And there are people in the city who either, for monetary reasons, or for health reasons, even for recreational reasons, although, quite frankly, I sort of put those a little further down in the totem pole, but who are users of the roads in terms of bicycles, who deserve to have streets that they can ride on without feeling like they're very unsafe. And I think it's worth the investment. I think it's the kind of, it provides our residents the kind of quality of life that I think that they should expect. It provides people choices in how they get around their city and mobility. And I think it's the right thing to do, and it is very important to me. And I will continue to push that our streets become as safe as they can be for all users. Thank you very much.
Yes, just for the record, Mr. Attorney, you have not issued, I haven't received an opinion regarding that issue that Mr. Zavos has raised, and you have not issued an opinion on that as yet.
The secondary issue with related to the mechanics of the charter, yeah, we're finishing that up.
Right, so we don't, there's, I don't have an opinion regarding the issue that you have raised, so. There's nothing to release it until he gives us that opinion. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
We are adjourned.